Is there someone that would like to offer a prayer for us?
I'll say prayer.
Please.
Lord, I just want to thank you for tonight, just for your love for us to be here tonight. I just pray that you can watch over us and bless us all and be there for us, Lord. I just pray that you continue to have your hands upon our leaders in Coatesville, help them to continue to drive our city in a positive direction, Lord, and moving our city forward. In the light of all the things that are against us, Lord, these people stand up and help drive our city to move us forward. Just keep having your hands upon us, watch over our city, love us and be there for us. Just say a prayer. Amen.
Let me just say this, Lord, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God. Do you hear this one? We're going to give you a minute to start off.
Didn't you just have an executive session here to discuss personnel and legal matters? And I would like to ask for a motion for approval of our minutes from December 11th. So. Comments?
I'd like to abstain from this vote because I wasn't on council at the time. If those minutes were done.
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
You're okay. This is Brooklyn State, right?
Yes.
This is Hunt?
Yes.
This is Lawson. This is Green?
Yes.
This is Laverne Norris.
Do you want to get a motion for approval of our council? Just a second.
Second.
Just a second.
Second. Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
This is Houghton?
Yes.
This is Laverne Norris?
Yes.
Do you want to get a motion for approval of our council? Just a second.
Second.
Just a second.
Second. Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
This is Houghton?
Yes.
This is Laverne Norris?
Yes.
Before we do the minutes, can I acknowledge that Mr. Simpson is not here because of illness? I'll make a motion and then approve, please, those table. One second.
I have a question. I'm sorry. I know I'm late. Page sixteen of one eighteen. It's the police Dodge floor part. Is that for the new vehicle?
What is it?
The police Dodge floor part?
That was for the 2013 Dodge.
That's not the new one, is it?
No, that's for the 2013. It's still under warranty, but the work was not covered by warranty. It was just simple wear and tear where the, from the officer's feet and driver's location had worn the hole through the floor port, local wards, and insulation. So that had to be removed and replaced. Unfortunately, the Dodge wouldn't cover that since it's kind of like wearing your gray pads out. It's like a little wear and tear.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
But those thirteen Dodges are still under warranty until this July.
All right. Till July?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
This is Laverne Norris?
Yeah.
In addition, definitions and mark. Madam President, I would like to add to the agenda tonight the accepting of the resignation of Councilwoman Marie Lawson.
Do you want to add that at the end of action items or do it first?
We should put that at the top.
I get six point out.
Six point out.
Acceptance of resignation.
Are there any others? And I would like to remove action number six point one. First reading of the alert is tabled to our next meeting.
We need a second. I guess Mrs. Green.
Oh, I'm second. I'm sorry.
It went to one at a time. We wanted to have all the others. That would be delete four point two for victory, add six point zero for Mrs. Lawson's resignation, and renew six point one for alert. Table is to the next meeting. Yes. Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
This is Laverne Norris?
Yeah.
In addition, definitions and mark. Madam President, I would like to leave victory sport from the agenda. And that was under the president. Mrs. Brown, if you have a few.
Madam President, I would like to add to the agenda tonight the accepting of the resignation of Councilwoman Marie Lawson.
Do you want to add that at the end of action items or do it first?
We should put that at the at the top.
I get six point out.
Six point out.
Acceptance of resignation.
Are there any others? And I would like to remove action number six point one. First reading of the alert is tabled to our next meeting.
We need a second. I guess Mrs. Green.
Oh, I'm second. I'm sorry.
It went to one at a time. We wanted to have all the others. That would be delete four point two for victory, add six point zero for Mrs. Lawson's resignation, and renew six point one for alert. Table is to the next meeting.
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
Mrs. Laverne Norris?
Yes.
Okay. We're on to presentations and we have Natural Lands.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ann Hutchinson with Natural Lands and I'm here with other Natural Lands colleagues, Molly Morris and our president, Oliver Bass and Karen Clancy. And I'd also like to acknowledge Vanessa Briggs and Jill Whitcomb from the Brandywine Health Foundation. Their fundraising efforts are making the action items we're presenting tonight possible. There are four action items on your agenda and we wanted to give you a brief explanation before that part of the agenda. We've had the opportunity to work with your Palmer Park Advisory Committee and on December 12th, that committee recommended approval of first, the master plan for Palmer Park, which shows four stages of improvements. And second, they recommended that we proceed with the first phase for which we have funding due to grants from the American Charitable Water Foundation and ArcelorMittal. Karen Clancy, the designer for the project, is available to give a brief overview if you like. And if you're in a hurry and prefer not to have that, we'll keep going. So whatever your pleasure is there.
Then she can kind of turn those around so that people can see them?
Yeah, she can put them up maybe there too.
Also, in fact, please. We have eleven by seventeen.
Put it on the screen as well.
So just to be clear, did you want me to give a brief presentation of the master plan? All right. So this master plan has been developed. It was developed with a series of meetings with an advisory committee that included some members of city council as well as residents, elected and non-elected officials. And it occurred over a series of three meetings during the latter part of last year. During those meetings, we received a lot of input from the committee and residents who were attending the meetings about what already happened in the park and what they would like to see in the park. And based on that input, we were able to come up with a conceptual plan for improvements to the park and then also able to divide up those improvements into four distinct phases to allow them to be individually fundraised for, kind of attacked, I guess, in a more realistic way. So the first phase, and let me get to there. So the first phase is in the upper right-hand corner of the park, the northeast of the park, where the current pool is. This pool has not functioned for over a decade. The decision from the advisory committee and residents attending was that it may make sense to remove that pool as repairs to it would be not feasible right now and replace it with a splash pad, which is lower maintenance and less expensive, and also a natural play area. The other reason for those two activities is we have received a grant from the American Water Foundation for $150,000 for these improvements in addition to our other funding. So that was phase one of the park. It also includes landscaping. It includes a public gathering space. It does not include removal of the two existing buildings. They will stay. The upper right-hand pump house for the pool could possibly also be reused for the splash pad equipment. So those would remain in place. Phase two is the existing playground, which is in great condition already. The play equipment is wonderful equipment. For this area, we're simply suggesting replacing the existing play surfacing, which is a rubberized surfacing that requires a lot of maintenance and is expensive to repair, with a mulch powder. We also received input from the community that the space was a little bit open and when they're there with their children or families, they felt as if the children could run into the street. So we are suggesting a landscaped border to that area. We're also suggesting some improved seating and additional benches, basically making the space a little bit more comfortable for visitors. Phase three is the southern end of the park and we're calling this the great lawn area. In this area, we are recommending pruning of the existing trees to make it kind of a lighter, more dappled shade rather than the dark shade that is there right now. We're suggesting a larger and improved pavilion gathering space and we are suggesting some additional seating, a really fun hammock area that people really responded to. And I have photos of these later on if you'd like to see them, as well as in the lower right-hand portion of the park, an improved parke space area and some chess tables and other game tables as well as picnic area. In phase four, which is not actually part of Palmer Park, but we are going to connect it to the park by replanning a part of East Chestnut Street, which is the street that runs east-west in between the north and south portions. We are going to replace an existing basketball court with both an adult basketball court and a youth-sized court to allow for more people to enjoy the space at the same time, add a pavilion, and add more landscaping. Also, as a part of this master plan, we are suggesting new lighting for the entire park to make it more usable for more hours of the day. So that was the basic plan for the improvements at Palmer Park and this is what the community responded to. So the rest of the presentation is just really showing photos of what is suggested for phase one as we already have most of the funding for this. A lot of focus has been put into refining the design for phase one. So if you look on the right-hand side of the slide, there are some images of what nature play can be and some specific play structures that we're suggesting for the park. Climbing structures, a slide, climbing areas, kind of ropes to walk along. It's really all about improving balance and climbing skills and more discovering what you can do with the pieces that go out there rather than traditional play equipment, which often only has one or two uses. Here's more images of potential nature play, more climbing stumps, balance, logs, and stumps to jump off of, climb, just explore and use in a different way almost any time someone comes to the park. And then a very important part of the American Water Foundation's grant requirement and something that I think is going to be so important in Coatesville, you have the splash pad already. This splash pad is going to be a little bit different because instead of the traditional splash equipment, this is definitely going to be more nature-based. So we're talking a lot of stones and boulders that the water will be running through, a lot more chance to kind of interact with water and see how it flows. So we're suggesting in the center space where on the plan you see phase one, that's a central gathering area with benches along the outside, but directly in the middle will be the origin of a stream that runs downhill into a shallow pool that kids can interact with at the bottom. And that origin can be manually operated with the pump that you see on the lower right-hand side. In addition, the splash pad area that is up to the north, all water from that splash pad is going to be funneled into the stream also. So it will be reused, not once, but actually twice. It goes into the stream, kids can still interact with it, and then it flows down to the shallow pond. So it's an interesting way to talk about water reuse and conservation in something that's inherently not very, it doesn't conserve water naturally because it's a splash pad. But in this way, we're kind of teaching what are ways that you can interact and conserve water. So here are some of the concepts for what that splash pad area will look like. It's not right equipment. It's not plastic. It really is pretty simple water features and then the boulders that the kids can interact with and parents or caregivers can sit on and be comfortable on the space. Overhead features and ground features. Landscape in this area is simple. It's concrete, it's boulders, it's lawn, and it's native trees and plants. Under the nature play equipment, we're doing that same wood fiber surfacing that we're suggesting for the playground in phase two. And that is the end of the presentation. Any questions?
I have a question. Is there consideration for restrooms out there in the park?
So this is a question that came up many times. Part of the funding for doing the conceptual plan did not involve investigating the current bath, the shower building or bathroom building. So we don't know if that can be reused right now or refurbished in order to be bathrooms. But it's definitely a consideration for a future phase.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you again for the opportunity to share this plan with you. And I think what you see here is both a reflection of the community's very thoughtful and creative input and a reflection of the unique opportunity we have, thanks to the American Water Charitable Foundation, to bring something very special to the city of Coatesville. And we're looking forward to moving this along very quickly because we have some deadlines that we have to meet this year. And on the subject of moving this along and implementing, we are still in the process of raising funds for this implementation, particularly of phase one. And one opportunity that we have coming up in the middle of February is to apply to Chester County for a municipal grant for development of the park. And so one of the items in your action items tonight is approval of a motion that would allow the submission of that application on your behalf. Natural Lands will prepare the application and submit it on your behalf, but we need a motion from you and a resolution approving that, the resolution that needs to accompany the grant proposal. So I'll distribute those to you in a moment, but before I do, I just want to point out that in the resolution, you will see an item where it says the municipality will have available a maximum of a certain number, $62,700, available as a match. That match is coming from the already secured funds from the American Water Charitable Foundation and from ArcelorMittal. So we're not asking council to commit to that amount. The reason it says a maximum is that the exact amount of the grant application will not be determined until closer to the time that we are finalizing the grant and the budget is a little bit clearer. So the maximum amount simply gives us the opportunity to have the resolution be appropriate for the application when it goes in. So that's the explanation of that. And I will distribute these and then I believe Ann has another item for you.
The final action item on your agenda relating to parks looks beyond phase one of Palmer Park and looks at building regional capacity to improve park and recreation facilities and programs. Over the past year, due to funding from the Brandywine Health Foundation, Natural Lands and Tool Recreation Planning has worked with South Coatesville, Medina Borough, Valley, and Callan Townships with participation from the school district. And in November, two of your council people attended a meeting with those other municipalities. The discussion centered on building capacity to share recreation programs and perhaps staffing. There is an opportunity through DCNR, the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, to take advantage of a peer grant. And for that peer grant, there's about $10,000 in time from a park professional, most likely Ann Tool, who sees if there are opportunities for the communities to work together, perhaps sharing staffing, sharing some maintenance costs to better improve the park system. To date, South Coatesville and Medina Boroughs and Valley Township have passed motions that they're interested in pursuing that peer grant. The Coatesville Area School District has placed that on their next agenda meeting and the superintendent is asking her school board to look favorably upon that motion as well. It's really all about improving balance and climbing skills and more discovering what you can do with the pieces that go out there rather than traditional play equipment, which often only has one or two uses. Here's more images of potential nature play, more climbing stumps, balance logs, and stumps to jump off of, climb, just explore and use in a different way almost any time someone comes to the park. And then a very important part of the American Water Foundation's grant requirement and something that I think is going to be so important in Coatesville, you have the splash pad already. This splash pad is going to be a little bit different because instead of the traditional splash equipment, this is definitely going to be more nature-based. So we're talking a lot of stones and boulders that the water will be running through, a lot more chance to kind of interact with water and see how it flows. So we're suggesting in the center space where on the plan you see Phase One, that's a central gathering area with benches along the outside, but directly in the middle will be the origin of a stream that runs downhill into a shallow pool that kids can interact with at the bottom. And that origin can be manually operated with the pump that you see on the lower right-hand side. In addition, the splash pad area that is up to the north, all water from that splash pad is going to be funneled into the stream also, so it'll be reused, not once, but actually twice. It goes into the stream, kids can still interact with it, and then it flows down to the shallow pond. So it's an interesting way to talk about water reuse and conservation in something that's inherently not very... It doesn't conserve water naturally because it's a splash pad, but in this way, we're kind of teaching what are ways that you can interact and conserve water? So here are some of the concepts for what that splash pad area would look like. It's not right equipment, it's not plastic, it really is pretty simple water features, and then the boulders that the kids can interact with, and parents or caregivers can sit on and be comfortable on the space. Overhead features and ground features. Landscape in this area is simple, it's concrete, it's boulders, it's lawn, and it's native trees and plants. Under the nature play equipment, we're doing that same wood fiber surfacing that we're suggesting for the playground in Phase Two. And that is the end of the presentation. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. Is there consideration for restrooms out there in the park?
So this is a question that came up many times. Part of the funding for doing the conceptual plan did not involve investigating the current bath...the shower building or bathroom building, so we don't know if that can be reused right now or refurbished in order to be bathrooms, but it's definitely a consideration for a future phase.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to share this plan with you. And I think what you see here is both a reflection of the community's very thoughtful and creative input and a reflection of the unique opportunity we have, thanks to the American Water Charitable Foundation, to bring something very special to the city of Coatesville, and we're looking forward to moving this along very quickly because we have some deadlines that we have to meet this year. And on the subject of moving this along and implementing, we are still in the process of raising funds for this implementation, particularly of Phase One. And one opportunity that we have coming up in the middle of February is to apply to Chester County for a municipal grant for development of the park. And so one of the items in your action items tonight is approval of a motion that would allow the submission of that application on your behalf. Natural Lands will prepare the application and submit it on your behalf, but we need a motion from you and a resolution approving that, the resolution that needs to accompany the grant proposal. So I'll distribute those to you in a moment, but before I do, I just want to point out that in the resolution, you will see an item where it says the municipality will have available a maximum of a certain number, $62,700, available as a match. That match is coming from the already secured funds from the American Water Charitable Foundation and from ArcelorMittal, so we're not asking Council to commit to that amount. The reason it says a maximum is that the exact amount of the grant application will not be determined until closer to the time that we are finalizing the grant and the budget is a little bit clearer. So the maximum amount simply gives us the opportunity to have the resolution be appropriate for the application when it goes in. So that's the explanation of that. And I will distribute these, and then I believe Ann has another item for you.
The final action item on your agenda relating to parks looks beyond Phase One of Palmer Park and looks at building regional capacity to improve park and recreation facilities and programs. Over the past year, due to funding from the Brandywine Health Foundation, Natural Lands and Tool Recreation Planning has worked with South Coatesville, Medina Borough, Valley, and Callan Townships with participation from the school district. And in November, two of your councilpeople attended a meeting with those other municipalities. The discussion centered on building capacity to share recreation programs and perhaps staffing. There is an opportunity through DCNR, the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, to take advantage of a peer grant, and for that peer grant, there's about $10,000 in time from a park professional, most likely Ann Tool, who sees if there are opportunities for the communities to work together, perhaps sharing staffing, sharing some maintenance costs to better improve the park system. To date, South Coatesville and Medina Boroughs and Valley Township have passed motions that they're interested in pursuing that peer grant. The Coatesville Area School District has placed that on their next agenda meeting, and the superintendent is asking her school board to look favorably upon that motion as well. The Brandywine Health Foundation has agreed to provide the $1,000 regional match, so that's also on your agenda for consideration this evening. Are there any questions?
Two resolutions.
And then we also have three items we'd like to report out on, the first being a program called Street Reach.
So just as a reminder, and especially for those of you who are new to Council, a little over a year ago, in November of 2016, Council approved a resolution that included seven items, authorizing Natural Lands to work to advance these seven items, all of which were recommendations of the Coatesville Parks Action Plan that we had created in the months leading up to last November. Palmer Park Master Plan, which you just heard about, was one of those action items, and the peer grant was one of those action items. One of the other things was a reference to creating some kind of an ambassador program for Coatesville's parks. And this recommendation came about as really a reflection of the feedback we had heard throughout that planning process from citizens who said that one of their chief concerns was safety. It was wanting to make sure that they felt safe sending their kids to the parks and making sure that they would be safe when they were there. And we have been looking at how best to formulate an ambassador program of some kind, a way to get an adult presence in the parks. And several months ago, Ann Tool, our Recreation Planner Consultant who you've met, came across a program in Minneapolis called Street Reach. And this is a program that's been in place in Minneapolis for about 10 years. And what it does essentially is put adults in the parks and in the neighborhoods around the parks as a way to, one, be eyes and ears for the municipality, for the city, for the city police, but more importantly, or just as importantly, to be a resource to the children. And so these are adults who have been trained, these are, in their case, oftentimes they're teachers, others with child development experience, who are there to interact with the kids, build rapport with them, and when they identify kids who might be in crisis or might be in need of resources, they're able to provide that support. Ann Tool was really taken by that program, and as it turns out, Minneapolis Parks Department is very interested in exploring whether or not it's a model that can be exported elsewhere in the country, fortunately for us. Ann was one of the first people to raise her hand at a conference when this was brought up, said, "I might have a place for you." And so we have been continuing that conversation since then. At the December 12th meeting of the Advisory Committee, the Palmer Park Advisory Committee, we briefed the committee on this concept. They were certainly intrigued and interested. So in reaction to that, with Council's permission, we would like to invite and have preliminarily scheduled a visit from the Street Reach staff people, two members of the Minneapolis Parks System staff, to come at the end of November...uh, the end of February, sorry, February 20...it'll be a long time from now, February 27th and 28th for a visit, an opportunity to meet with Council, do some presentations about the program, also meet with other members of the community, community leaders, in hopes that we can learn more about the program and determine whether it's a model that makes sense for Coatesville. So it's more just an informational item that we're preparing that visit, and we'll be in touch with you soon to share more details. But I will just tell you, the Minneapolis Parks Department has a reputation as being one of the best, if not the best, in the United States. So these are folks who know what they're doing, and they have developed a program over 10 years and evaluated it, and we see something there that might be very special for Coatesville, so we're eager to have them come and share that with you. So again, the dates, if you want to just put them down temporarily, are February 27th and 28th, and we're working very closely with our friends at Brandywine Health Foundation, of course, and we will be getting an invitation out to you shortly. Any initial questions about that? Thank you.
So in order to keep up this pace of continuing to look at your parks, we've looked at...we've worked on Patton and now Palmer. We believe the next logical park to look at would be Ash Park. That's a bigger lift from a master plan and design phase than Patton and Palmer because it's larger, it's your only community park. As you well know, it has that swimming pool on it, it has an underground stream that will require some consultation from an engineer as well. The logical funder for master park plans is DCNR, and they have a grant round coming in April, so we would like to think about whether you're interested in pursuing a master plan for Ash Park, and within the next 30 to 45 days, we would need a decision from you on that. If you moved ahead with a grant application and were successful, those funds are usually awarded in late fall through calendar year-end 2018. That work is then bid, and realistically, the planning process would start a little more than a year from now. So you need a pretty long view to keep up the pace on these park plans.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is...at the other park on the list, that park hasn't been...the kiddie part of that park has not been upgraded in many, 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 many years. I think most of the things over there are probably still outdated, or probably not even AMA compliant.
All of the parks are on the list, so that is...and it is, Council's...will follow your lead. We thought that as your community park, and I know you've had a lot of demands for different uses at Ash Park, that it made sense to go there next, but if we're wrong and you'd rather look at another park, let us know soon. And the final item we have for you this evening is a look at the swimming pools. There's a January 16th report in your packet, and while I wish I was here to tell you we had an easy solution for the Ash Park pool, you haven't found one, nor have we. We know that nationally, the largest cities in this country average about one pool per 40,000 residents, and at about 13,000 residents with two swimming pools, it's unlikely that a market study would tell you you should be looking even at one, much less two. Elsewhere in Chester County, there's only one other municipality that runs its...that operates its own pool, and that's Tiny Little Spring City with 3,300 people. As you get closer to the inner suburbs of Philadelphia in Montgomery County, you find many more swimming pools. They tended to be built after the Second World War, although I believe yours and Ash Park is much older, from the 1920s. Allentown, about 10 times your population, a little over 120,000 people, recently underwent a very comprehensive analysis, and they are moving from parks with five swimming pools and two splash pads to three swimming pools and five splash play areas. That brings them into the one-per-40,000-residence pool ratio. The most recent repair costs we have for Ash Park Pool appeared a total of about $200,000 in costs. I'm not clear if that addressed all safety and accessibility requirements, and it did not include the bathhouse renovations. We know that earlier budgets from 2016 estimated about $25,000 a year for part-time lifeguards and maintenance staff, and the cost of the pool chemicals was not part of that estimate. The city is no longer able to sustain a Parks and Recreation Department, although you've certainly worked with advisory committees and recently appointed a Parks and Recs Commission. In my report, there's a table of the pros and cons of keeping versus permanently closing Ash Park Pool. Safety is one of the greatest concerns. The school district does tell us that all second graders in the public school district are required to take a water safety course as part of their curriculum. Certainly, heat relief, quality of life, community building, and health and fitness are all great reasons to have a city pool. And Ash Park enhances those aspects of the community. We could argue that those are available seasonally only, and to some degree, a splash pad can provide some of those benefits. Our conclusion is that, given the city's current financial situation and a lack of any staff to operate and repair the pool, it's simply not feasible to open the pool in this current climate. But we are in no way saying that you should give up on the pool. Specifically, as it appears was on your agenda tonight, to stabilize the pool and bathhouse so that no further damage occurs, to conduct a master plan for Ash Park, to give city council a better understanding of the residents' desired uses for the park, the costs of bringing the pool up to current safety and accessibility standards, the economic projections from redevelopment, and perhaps re-establishing a Parks and Recreation Department, whether individually or shared in the region, as revenue starts to be generated from some of the economic development initiatives in the city. We also believe there's potential to investigate partnerships, perhaps one of the most promising being this multi-municipal look at working with neighbors, South Coatesville, Medina, Valley, and the school district. When you include the population of that entire region, you get to about 37,000 people, which is close to what they tell us nationally is feasible for financially supporting and operating a pool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
It's given to the general audience. Start with 6.0. 6.0 is regarding Councilwoman Marie Lawson's resignation. Mrs. Lawson has some family matters that caused her to resign her position. She'll be greatly missed. However, she has informed me that she will still be available to the community, working, helping out as much as she possibly can. But we do respect and appreciate her decision to step down to take care of her personal matters, and we support her in that. So might I get a motion to...to set a call for her... Mrs. Lawson, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
Yes.
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 Okay, our process with regard to Mrs. Lawson's resignation and filling the council seat, we would appreciate any resident that lives within that second ward, which is First Avenue to Sixth Avenue on the west side from...let me...the west side of the sixth avenue. Lincoln Highway to...what is that? Baxter Street up top? Yes, encompassing that area. Any resident that lives in that area and is interested in becoming a council member, I would need you to submit us a letter of interest, and again, you would have to be a resident of that area. At that time, Council will speak with you, and we will bring it to the forefront to vote on a replacing Mrs. Lawson. There's a 30-day process. The window will be open for you to come in. We'll make our decision. We have to do it within those 30 days. If not, then it will be out of our hands. And we would like to decide who in our city will represent our city. So that'll be the process. Please take it into consideration. If you know of anybody that would be interested, have them submit. They will definitely need to be registered voters in that district...in that ward, I'm sorry. So again, if you know of anyone that would be interested, if you're interested, by all means, submit us a letter of interest, and we'll go through the process together.
So is not that a special meeting? Next meeting?
Okay, our meeting, we'll do that. We'll wrap it up, so I'll say, by February 12th, we can vote on that and appoint our next council member.
You would need to be in contact with the people. Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrinard, also, is that...will they be fulfilling the rest of her term, or will that be until the next election?
Until the next election.
To the primary.
To the primary. Okay. So it may you have to run in the primary.
Yes.
Okay.
2019 primary.
No.
No, this may.
This may.
This primary.
You have a primary coming up.
Special election, special. This is a special election. When you fill in the seat, it's the next...there's the first available election.
Yeah, the first one that comes up. Okay, be clear? Any questions regarding it? Yes?
Good evening. I am Delores Williams. Glad for it.
Please.
Good evening, Council. I am Delores Williams, and I live in the second ward, and I am one of those people who is interested in running for that open council seat. My question to you tonight is, once I receive the...I do the letter, who would I turn that into and by what...I know there's a 30-day window, but by what date would that be? Would it be by the 12th of February or the 4th?
The 12th will be when we'll actually make our decision.
Okay.
So the sooner the better. The sooner you get it in, the sooner we can get Council together.
Okay.
To discuss and call you in.
Okay.
To discuss it.
The pendant permit is just about finalized. The bid packages are being prepared now as we speak. We expect bid packages out by the end of this month, early February for bids on that construction. Could be in construction as early as, as much as March, March, April. So we will be posting this on the website. There will be updates regularly on traffic and other issues that we'll have, have to do a lot of traffic control and realignment during construction, and we'll make sure the public is well aware of that as it occurs.
I have a question. Will this affect our unit day celebration?
According to the planners and the engineers, we'll be able to function with circulation. There will be no closings of the streets. We always have closings. There will be inconveniences, there will be issues with the traffic maintenance and control, but we understand there will be no closing of any streets, and we'll have front flow through the entire construction period. So aside from the inconvenience we may have, it will not stop that from happening this year, as well as other, any other activities.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Laverne?
Yes.
Six point three, receive and consider hiring part-time police officer John P. Bogan to full-time under the COPS board grant. Make it a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Chief, did you want to say?
Sure, sure. We looked at opportunities to better serve the community. Constant recurring theme in a lot of the meetings that I attend, whether it's with Sunny, working for things like the Wells Fargo Grant, and the different initiatives that her organization is involved in, whether it's with Mr. Trio, attending meetings with Mr. Petrus and the Gateway Project. And the first question that really comes up with regard to potential investment, future residents, is how safe is the city of Coatesville? And that really is the big question that people want to know before they want to come here and invest in our community, in businesses, community or as a family unit. How safe are they going to be? So we looked at that, and considering the financial constraints the city currently operates under, we looked at ways to potentially fund an additional officer through the department. So we took advantage of DOJ's COPS grant initiative and put together a proposal. It's very competitive. There was only three other awards in the state. We were lucky enough to obtain one of those awards for one position here at the city of Coatesville. And actually, nationally, we ranked in the top 10 sites to be considered in the entire nation for this program. So in some ways, that kind of speaks to the need that is present in our community for policing. We based our proposal on attempting to reduce gun violence in the community, and we scored extremely high. Like I say, it's great for us to score high, but it's also unfortunate to be scored high. So hopefully, with the funding that's provided in this, it's not 100% funding, it's 125,000 over three years, with a fourth-year commitment from the city to fund that all-in-one position. So there is a certain amount of financial responsibility the city has to assume, but we in the police department feel that it is worth the opportunity to take advantage of that 125,000 that is going to provide us with another full-time officer. Some of the ways that we can offset the cost of that full-time officer are reductions in overtime, and in our, in our opinion, the rest is offset by the public safety benefit that will be provided, so that we can hopefully continue to move the city forward, track new business, no investment opportunities, bring people in there that want to come to the city of Coatesville. So that was our proposal. We were lucky enough to get the award. And my recommendation to council is that we promote part-time officer Bogan, who's been one of our part-time officers now for about two years, civil service compliant, went through the civil service hiring process as a part-time officer, which makes him eligible for promotion to full-time upon recommendation of the chief. I based my recommendation upon the input from the other officers who work with him day-to-day, and also the other supervisors that get an opportunity to observe what kind of officer he is. And it was pretty much unanimous that the officer Bogan was selected for promotion to full-time officer. Thank you, members.
Is that Officer Bogan?
No, he's, he's not here tonight. Pending approval, we will bring him back the next council meeting with his family and officially swear him in as a full-time officer.
Great job, chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Laverne?
Yes.
Six point four, receive and consider master plan for Palmer Park. I'll make that motion, I'll second. Questions, comments? Hold on.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
Mrs. Laverne?
Yes.
Six point five, receive and consider approval, authorizing National Land Trust to work with the city engineer to complete a bid package for phase one of the Palmer Park master plan. I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? Hold on.
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Laverne?
Yes.
Six point six, receive and consider authorizing National Land Trust to prepare an application for Chester County Municipal Development Grant to augment available funding for Palmer Park Phase One due February 12th. I'll make a motion supporting that grant.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? Hold on, please.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Laverne?
Yes.
Six point seven, receive and consider adopting resolution to apply for a PA DCNR peer grant, which will provide a recreation professional on a part-time basis for one year for the purpose of determining the feasibility of a recreation partnership between the city of Coatesville, South Coatesville, Medina Borough, Valley, and County Townships, and the Coatesville Area School District. To date, South Coatesville, Medina Boroughs, and Valley Township have adopted resolutions to participate. The Coatesville Area School District indicated interest and will present the resolution for consideration at a future meeting. The $10,000 grant requires a $1,000 match to be provided by generous gift from the Brady Light Company. Do you have any?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Questions, comments?
I just want to say, this is a really great peer program, inter municipalities working together. It's very tough, and it's hard to, to, for everyone to afford to have their own recreation person. I think this is fantastic. And they do this in a lot of other different municipalities, and it works very well. So I thank you for coming with that.
I, I just want to say, we had a discussion with the other municipalities that were listed. We actually sat in a meeting with them, and the energy in the room was amazing, because while none of the municipalities have been working collaboratively, the excitement to do so was so positive that this is coming to fruition, and it's for the betterment of not just the city, but all of our neighbors. And it's an opportunity for us to work together and bridge the gaps. So I look forward to it. And thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mrs. Houghton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Laverne?
Yes.
On to discussion items. We have meeting minutes. Any questions come to go to that? I did have, who did I hear? Seven point two is cold blue animals. Councilwoman Lawson had brought back more work regarding the, with the cold and animals being out there. I really don't have much background information, chief, would you?
There, there was a recent change. It was part of our legal updates, where it was 2016, when they talked about the change to the dog ball. And basically, it's to give enforcement officers SPCA, and the dog ball, so it's another tool where they could take enforcement action if they see where a resident or pet owner is perhaps tying up an animal in the cold without proper shelter, and access to water that's not frozen, and so on and so forth. So we did actually have one incident where we took action here in the city of Coatesville based upon that law, and the SPCA took over the investigation and corrected the problem. So it's just something that we should all be aware of, certainly those in the community. If you see something, say something, and we'll definitely start an investigation with the assistance of the SPCA. If it's appropriate, take the enforcement action.
I have a question. So in Philadelphia, they have this cold blue coat brand, and I know it's geared toward shelter, but there's a $500 fine that's attached. Is there, does that fine go to the city, or does that go to the SPCA, that fine? Like who is it that fines these owners?
That's, that's a good question. I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure. I know if we write the citation, then it would come to the city, but I don't know if, if the SPCA officer writes it, I'm not sure. But I'll find out, and let you know.
Thank you.
Now, whereas cold as it got this year, this is, I mean, we had record lows. Do we kind of have something on the books for this that's affected, or we're just going by the SPCA? Do we have anything on our books?
I just took a look at the screen, and all I saw was in the Animal Law, Chapter 72. There's a provision there that says if you're going to keep your pet in an enclosure, then enclosure be appropriate. It's not very specific. There's a $600 fine if you violate the statute. So ours isn't specific to this stuff.
Maybe it's something to consider, being, you know, made specific, because, I mean, we have some record low temperatures this year.
And a few animals that were out there.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Why do you not bring up my dog? I like putting names. I adopted a stray. Oh, he's so cute. See, I opened the front door, and he was right there, and I fell in love.
Seven point three, I don't know who put this on, exploring ways to increase revenue in our city. Three point one, investing of trust fund monies.
So it was me. I put it on, but, because it's something that actually, with the National Land Trust, with that care municipality, I've been looking into some things, and I've gotten some emails, um, I can't remember the company, but that other cities have been doing, joining together to offset property taxes, to offset, I mean, it's a whole, I think it's like 75 agents. But it's a lot of information that I think is worth having a discussion about. I think that this peer grant is like a little start to working together, because I think each of our surrounding municipalities have our challenge. And I think, you know, joining forces is an important thing. So I'm hoping that, I, I put it there because I was hoping that, seeing how the peer grant works, maybe they'll be more inclined to explore those options, to try. So I would like to push it back to have further discussion, but I wanted to put it out.
How about the regional transportation?
That was a combination.
Phase seven point four, issues in three community stores.
Yeah, that was me again.
I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask, yeah, have we been, have we been inundated with phone calls and complaints about some of these?
We received a few complaints, councilwoman.
Community market?
After receiving this request, I contacted Seth Walensky from Chester County Health Department. Seth and I did a joint inspection of these three markets. Both him and I went out and looked. In the past inspection, both the health department and my inspection was few issues, very minor, as you can see in the report. Health department's going to file up again, they're going to be doing their annual inspections, I believe in April, and it'll let me know if he finds any issues at that time. But when I went in there, there wasn't very many issues, they were all clean, up to code.
You're hearing a lot of complaints, and people are bringing a lot of complaints.
We do hear some complaints now and then.
I saw the one video that somebody posted on Facebook, a purchase they made in the community market, and it was a food item, a dry food item. And it was full of like live bugs inside the bag. The actual bag was sealed, but there were like a...
record lows. Do we kind of have something on the books for this that's affected? Or we're just going by the SPCA? Do we have anything on our books?
I just took a look at the screen and all I saw was in the Animal Law, Chapter seventy-two. There's a provision there that says if you're going to keep your pet in an enclosure, then enclosure be appropriate. It's not very specific. There's a six hundred dollar fine if you violate the statute. So ours isn't specific to this stuff.
Maybe it's something to consider being, you know, made specific because, I mean, we have some record low temperatures this year.
And a few animals that went up now.
Yeah.
One didn't knock me off my door. I'm like flipping ass.
Which?
I adopted a stray. Oh, he's so cute. See, I opened the front door and he was right there. I fell in love.
Seven point three. I don't know who put this on. Exploring ways to increase revenue in our city. Um, three point one, investing of trust fund monies.
So it was me. I put it on, but, um, because it's something that actually with the National Land Trust with that care municipality, I've been looking into some things and I've gotten some emails. Um, I can't remember the company, but that other cities have been doing, joining together to offset property taxes, to offset, I mean, it's a whole, I think it's like seventy-five pages. But it's a lot of information that I think is worth having a discussion about. Um, I think that this peer grant is like a little start to working together because I think each of our surrounding municipalities have our challenge. And I think, you know, joining forces is an important thing. So I'm hoping that, I put it there because I was hoping that seeing how the peer grant works, maybe they'll be more inclined to explore those options and try. So I would like to push it back to have further discussion. But I wanted to put it out.
How about the regional transportation?
Yeah, that was a combination.
Okay, seven point four. Issues in three community stores.
Yeah, that was me again.
I wanted to ask.
We got problems.
I wanted to ask, yeah. Have we been, have we been inundated with phone calls and complaints about some of these?
We received a few complaints, Councilwoman.
Community market?
After receiving this request, I contacted Seth Walensky from Chester County Health Department. Seth and I did a joint inspection of these three markets. Both him and I went out and we looked. In the past inspection, both the health department and my inspection was few issues, very minor, as you can see in the report. Health department's going to follow up again. They're going to be doing their annual inspections, I believe, in April. And they'll let me know if he finds any issues at that time. But when I went in there, there wasn't very many issues. They were all clean, up to code.
You said you're hearing a lot of complaints and people are bringing a lot of complaints.
We do hear some complaints now and then.
I saw the one video that somebody posted on Facebook. A purchase they made in the community market and it was a food item, a dry food item. And it was full of like live bugs inside the bag. The actual bag was sealed, but there were like a...
At the time of our inspection, we had witnessed some of that. I guess Seth's supposed to go back and do an annual inspection. That would be a health department issue. We're uncertain and we'll follow up with them and make sure they get the results.
I was just assuming that, you know, that particular situation was as if it's all expired food items being on a shelf to be sold like long since expired.
And I know he does check that and I can follow up with him tomorrow to make sure that we're checking to see if there's food that's expired in these places. We did go through it. I walked with him, spent some time in each building. Gun went over, we looked on the shelves. You know, we checked the different cooking areas. There really wasn't any issues, we could see at that time. But we'll follow up. Okay.
Yeah, one of these guys, he says for sisters, they don't sell cooked food.
No, they don't. They have the... Oh, these cold cuts, but it's not cooked food. They don't have a stove per se.
He's about the sisters on the fourth avenue? Yes, they do. They cook cheese steaks, cheeseburgers.
Chicken fingers.
Chicken fingers, french fries. Yes, they do.
I will double check getting this from Seth.
Part of your inspection, do you look at like extermination bills or checklist or something? Because in the store on Sixth Avenue, that video showed cockroaches crawling in and out of candy.
Yes.
Cupcakes.
Yes.
So I was just wondering if, and I mean, I get it, it's summertime, but you're a grocery store. So do you do monthly? Do you check that when you go out or does the Department of Health?
That's normally a health department issue. Seth is, you know, the Chester County representative from Coatesville. He's supposed to be checking that. I can certainly get with him and we can follow up to another inspection. But the time that we were in there, there was no bugs. They were clean. Stores were clean. They didn't know where to come.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what kind of accountability we had as far as codes as opposed to the Department of Health. So that's why I put it on. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice President. This is reported in the packet. Looks like old news already. The tamins her, that was a positive. Two point four eight percent is an unbelievable rate. Finances department gets out of the stock. The Sodom subdivision is really minorized now. West County and Valley cooperative. We went through both counties last week or so. We're just going to pick it up and get the Sodom to sign also. It's a valley city waiting for us to pick it up. Alerta, we're going to wait. Obviously it's a little wild here, but the groundwork is related. With that, we've run out of air and all we can do is temporary construction needs having various body. And I understand that we're getting a signature for those. That's it for that.
As mentioned, we did have our partners funding last week of December for a million dollars at that two point four eight rate, which will help us bridge the first portion of the year before tax coming. We have, as we all know, DCA now also includes the trash collection on the tax bills, which we expect to have greater collections for this year for that in that process. City home renovations are still well underway. We have the final changes from Chester County have been included. We're working through them. Actually, you'll be able to see some roof structure going up on the building very soon. There's a lot of scaffolding up around the building. We expect to have steel erected. Now, here given month, including February, substantial amount of the paintwork's been completed and identified. And any issues we have as we go through the construction of the building itself, we're finding some things. Unfortunately, there's a little more impact police department as we have to force a hold with some other construction-related things are identified during the process. But there is a three B schedule attached with your report from C H, eight-hour general contractor. But we're generally happy with the process moving forward. We haven't, sort of, no inspection experience anymore, construction delays, so we're in good shape with that. As far as the RDA, as you know, DG Group has closed the whole properties, although there's no cash proceeds from that transaction. It has remediated, not only five little cleanups that have affected not only this property, but the other properties in continuous area intersection. As we mentioned, Victory Sports was on the agenda, but unfortunately, they decided to postpone until February meeting. And we are moving forward with cooperation with the, uh, with the RDA, one in our system, Mark and Brew Club at the Record Building. So Don Corvers Projects has reviewed their, has received their R cap and moving forward, they're working with the RDA consultant to work with paperwork. As far as the engineering planning, code enforcement, December we issued eighty-three permits, fifty-seven rental permits for a fee of seventy-five eighteen. And the positive catch, put balance in the city of eighteen dollars. And once again, we're, we're in the positive on the building permits. Planning Commission, DG Land Development, well underway. They have attended one meeting, have done a presentation to the Planning Commission. They're making the revisions to the plan, which are expected by the end of this month, the next Planning Commission meeting in fourteen to February. Possibly they could be before council on February nineteenth for action if everything goes well with Planning Commission. So that could be expected actually in February. PC did consider the Lerta district. They recommended approving the district based on the multi, I'm sorry, the mixed-use overlay district, which creates the boundaries for the Lerta, which we'll see at the next meeting. There has been two hearings at the zoning board over the past month, two months for forty-four Oak Street and one forty-nine East Lincoln, Ohio, which will have decisions rendered next month. Intersection, which was mentioned earlier, funding has been allocated at one point seven. So we will be, once again, expand on that. We'll make sure that the public understands the, uh, the schedule of construction handling impact. I think I went over that pretty well earlier. Block grant, we are putting the bid packets together for the improvements on Third Avenue. We're trying to understand the scuz. We don't want to interfere with any events, which include the UNEC and also the Grand Prix because that's the main throat of being in the race, right, the third in Lincoln. So we're looking at the schedule on that. Public Works Director is continuing to interview additional employees. He's telling me he, he has a very great candidate who's going to propose to bring in this week. So we're moving forward, trying to fill some of those vacancies as this winter rolls forward. Pretty much that's it. The code report, financial report of our sheets are a past report with the balance sheets and the three week structure schedule is all same package. So I have that.
Okay, we're on to citizens here. First up is Delores Williams.
I already asked my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brazel?
Good evening, City Council and residents of Coatesville. Can I approach council? I have a letter of interest for the vacancy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, my name is Jarrell Brazel. I was born and raised in Coatesville. I lived in Coatesville for thirty-one years. I have a three-year-old son and a wife. I have my bachelor's degree from Chain University. I had a full academic scholarship. I got my best bachelor's degree in business administration with concentration in management. And then I went to Ball State University for my master's degree and applied behavior analysis with the emphasis in autism. And I am a certified behavior specialist in the state of Pennsylvania. I work for the Child and Career Development Center in Coatesville as a behavior specialist. And I'm also a private contractor for a company as a behavior specialist and also their training coordinator and also their incident management person. So I hold a lot of hats with that one company. I was on council, I had the honor of being on council at the age of twenty-three years old. In two thousand and ten, I was elected and straight out of college. And it was one of the most scariest things I've ever done in my life. It was very, very difficult. I had the honor of being on council with Ms. Hunt and also Mr. Simpson. But one thing I've learned being on council is that you need patience. The most important thing I've learned is you need to love the city of Coatesville. Because being on council is not a game. It's not for your own recognition. It's not for your own glory. Because I guarantee you won't have it at all. You will feel beat up. You will feel drained. You will feel exhausted. Some days you will leave out hating everything that you do for council. But that's one thing that I honestly can say that I appreciate because I was able to serve my city, you know, at a young age. I had to walk away from council after one term because I ended up having a family. I ended up having my son, who was my world. And I ended up getting married and also was going back for my master's degree. And I knew that wasn't going to be fair to the citizens or to council, my co-council members, if I continued council. So I decided to walk away from it. But now I'm back. It's been on my mind for a while. And, you know, I leave it up to God to determine what I'm going to do in my life. And I guess this opportunity came. And I would love the opportunity if council choose to fulfill this seat until May, and then I will run in May and I will win because I'm a Brazel and that's what we do. But just real quick, I'm just really proud of the recreational committee and commission. One thing about me being in Coatesville, I was raised in Coatesville, but also worked for the city of Coatesville. I was brought in at the time by Felicia Simone as a lifeguard. And then I moved up and ended up running the pools. Who would have thought that? Lifeguard and then being the pool manager and also being assistant under the recreation director at one point. So my passion is the children and the residents and in recreation. So if I was on council again, it would be awesome to work with the commission and also work with you guys out there. Is my time up? Is that what that means? Okay, all right. I have more, but I'll save it for the next meeting. All right, thank you.
You have your letter, so we'll be in contact to have a, have you come into a special session where we talk this to people who are yours.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Larry Douglas Depp Jr.
Don't mind circling these. Just take one, pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, council and residents. My name is Larry Douglas Depp Jr., the son of Larry Douglas Depp Sr., the grandchild of James Jim Depp, Nor Tan Tanny Depp of Coatesville, nephew of Pam Depp, Corinthian Depp, and the late James Muggs Depp. I've been coming to Coatesville since I was born. I love this city and the potential it has to become something great, something my ancestors and future generations will be proud of. Everything I do now is not for me, it's for my future legacy. And I actually purchased my first investment property in February two thousand and eleven in the city of Coatesville shortly after graduating University of Delaware with a degree in finance. And in investing, the saying goes, invest in your backyard. To me, Coatesville is my backyard simply because I have been coming to the city my entire life and I have a lot of family here in the city of Coatesville. It's my goal to provide as many people and families as possible with quality living spaces, no matter what their race, creed, religion, color, sex, or background is. I currently have over twenty-plus rental units scattered throughout Coatesville, Philadelphia, Blue Bell, and Newark, Delaware. I would like to continue my journey to renovating abandoned, distressed vacant properties throughout the city of Coatesville. Today, I would like to discuss a recent situation. One of my tenants passed away suddenly and her family was kind enough to clean the property up thoroughly. And they placed the trash bags and rubbish alongside of the property. I was not aware of the trash until January sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Through a series of questioning with a code official at the city, I was told that a permit was not required to remove trash and rubbish from the property. However, if someone other than myself or my company were to remove the trash, they would have to be registered with the city of Coatesville as a contractor, which means they would have to have full-blown contractor insurance registration as stated in section eighty-four dash seven in the city code. I asked the council, the members of the city, should someone need to be registered with the city as a contractor to remove rubbish and trash from a property? I shall continue. The main reason I bring this up is because I currently have a stop work order on one forty-nine West Lincoln Highway for unregistered contractors because a video was found on social media of people removing plaster, which is a wall covering, from the walls of the property, keeping all structural elements intact. According to the city code, the PA code, the UCC code, removing wall coverings does not require a permit. I asked the board members, codes department, community, if work as simple as removing wall coverings, removing trash, removing debris, removing rubbish does not require a permit, why is our code department going against what is written in the city code, PA code, UCC code by requiring registration? And why do I have a stop work order on my property for unregistered contractors, which were just a group of people removing plaster, removing trash, debris, and rubbish from a property while we wait for a zoning board decision? How do I go about appealing the stop work order if there is not a UCC Board of Appeals? Thank you.
Mr. Don Reddorn?
Good evening, council. And we should all have prosperous, new and prosperous new year.
Thank you.
Separate one, is this one or one first?
What is this about? There'll be a refund for the license, I believe. That's what you were, you were here in a previous meeting for?
That's one.
Okay, we can tell you right now, we did investigate that refund. And we do, we are going to refund that, I think it was seventy-five dollars?
Yes, sir.
So that's something that's done. I don't know what your other issue is. That's, that's what I recall you were here for last meeting for. So we just confirmed that with Mr. Mulberry. So here we receive a refund on that, on that, on that application. Who wants to prove by council that is?
Thank you, sir.
Is he proceeding with the rubber?
Okay.
Okay. There was a stop work order that was placed on one forty-nine West Lincoln Highway on December fourteenth. And a copy of that is a third from the back of the thing here. On the fifteenth, my associate, Mr. Depp, who was just speaking, he sent an email to the code officials asking, um, which of the, he sent a copy of the... which of the, he sent a copy of the permit application to the codes officials asking which of the sections apply to removing the debris and the plaster from the walls? The eight items that were on the, that are on the application is construct, demolish, alter, repair, replace, an addition, excavate, or enlarge a structure. Mr. Mulderig was asked that question in an email on the fourteenth. On the eighteenth, Mr. Mulderig responded that work was done in October two thousand and seventeen without permission, without permission. And the attached blank application that was sent was stated that it was in violation of the U C C four oh three point six two. That's the reason for the stop-work order. Now, in looking at the U C C, I did, there is no indication there that removing the plaster from the wall or any wall covering is, needs a permit. I did send a letter back to Mr. Mulderig asking him where I cited the permit requirements, section four oh three point six two, that Mr. Mulderig responded. A copy of his letter is attached there. And going through each section, it clearly indicates what is considered permitted work. It specifically states that no, when there is no removal of any load-bearing wall, partition, portion of a wall, structural beam or load-bearing, the list of it is stated there. I sent to Mr. Mulderig and asked him.
Excuse me, your time has expired.
Okay.
You need to wrap this up.
Okay. Okay, I will. Now, the basic questions are, all the questions I have been sending to Mr. Mulderig, I'm asking him right now, please, why is it you have not answered any of the questions that were sent to you in the emails?
Mr. Cory, you address, balancing your interests. You address all your questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. To the board, to the council.
I think your time has expired, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I don't understand how you heard the manager say, Mr. Thorny. I'm a little confused as to how you heard the manager say your time was expired and you stopped speaking. And when I asked the council president for you, you just continued on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Adams.
Madam President, members of council, I'd like to follow up when I was here before regarding the trust fund. After a multi-year eminent domain battle initiated and later withdrawn by Solicitor Carnes and city hired eminent domain attorneys from Fox and Rothschilds, there were hefty legal bills at a massive deficit in year two thousand and five, just five years after the trust fund was created with thirty-six million dollars. Solicitor Carnes devised the first and seemingly nine subsequent and possibly unauthorized withdrawals from the irrevocable city trust fund, revoking by ordinance terms impossible, breaking a contract governing an irrevocable trust while absent catastrophic emergencies and with never a court order or even a legal opinion provided to non-government citizens or stakeholders of the city of Coatesville that I'm aware of, and totaling twenty-five million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand and fifty-two in total withdrawals. Each, each trust fund ordinance I have here with the amount of the withdrawals. And on this missive, which I will leave at the end of my speech, they are all listed individually, the amounts. Mr. Carnes may have benefited from these withdrawals as well as law firms that may have offered legal advice in eminent domain battle, who may have also provided legal opinion that leaned towards their interest in getting paid that the trust fund terms could be revoked by ordinance to pay general fund expenditures, including massive failed eminent domain legal fees. This is how it started in two thousand and five. We have here, not properly commissioned is the Reserve Trust Fund Commission. It's supposed to be a five-person commission comprised of members here in the city of Coatesville. Only shows one person on the Reserve Trust Fund Board. Further, we cannot find a line item in the online financial statements of the city where the liability of over thirty-three million dollars in withdrawals from both Solicitor Carnes attorney and another law firm representing from two thousand and seven through two thousand and ten are to be repaid, where it is accounted for, where on the books is the grand total. In conclusion, I find evidence of malfeasance and misappropriations of funds and recommend council seek fresh and very independent legal advice. And please respond to this missive. So many aspects of the governance of the trust fund are questionable. I strongly recommend council seek the services of an independent municipal firm to make determinations on these matters presented. And absent a catastrophic emergency, seek a court order before making any more withdrawals. I have here definition of an irrevocable trust. It can't be amended, modified, or revoked after it's formed. There are some exceptions, and one of them is a court order. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Council President. Thank you. Mrs. Green.
Yes.
Mrs. Sonnen.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mrs. Aaronor.
Yes.
As we have no special events, so we move forward to council.
I do have information. We did receive the application for the property again this year, this past week. So we'll be processing that through the staff and have recommendations to inform. Shouldn't probably next week.
For activities such as that in the parks, is the calendar like monthly disseminated? Like how can we see?
It's basically as it comes. Yes, okay. And then we'll put it on the schedule before.
Okay.
So if anybody comes in once a same day, we make sure that there's no conflicts on.
Because they can come for a while, for a few months. Right, that's always one. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Hoffman, your comments?
I just want to say, this is a lot of information and being new to council, you just have to be a little patient with me because this is so much to absorb. And I'm learning, and I promise that I'm going to get this. And it's going to be great. I promise. It takes time.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for coming out tonight, for the presentations, National Land Trust. I'm really excited. I'm really excited about that. To the two potential interested in the position to complete Marie's term, thank you so much. And we look forward to speaking with you guys. For everyone else, thank you so much for coming out and for entrusting us with making decisions in your best interest. Have a good night and be safe.
I want to thank everyone for coming as well. I'm excited about the police rent and each thing that we're doing to help the city. Thank you, everyone, National Land Trust. Thank you so much for the hard work and the research, the rent renovation in order to make things happen with our parks. We appreciate that. Thank you to everyone that has come to me. We look forward to seeing you on the next meeting.
I echo the same thoughts on, thank everyone for coming out. Land Trust, you guys are, I mean, that whole Palmer Park plan is just awesome. The peer program is just another awesome thing. I just thank you guys for coming to the city and partnering with us on our parks. We need it. And you have provided that help. Hi, Sunny, thank you for being here. I know you work hard for us, we want a daily basis. Jerrel, thank you for your letter. You know, we will have a meeting and have all the people who are interested come in so that we can make a decision quickly. We're going to miss Marie. Marie was such a strong fighter for the city of Coatesville. But I just thank everyone, and I just wish everyone good night.
I also want to thank everybody for coming out and echo my colleagues' sentiments in order to National Land Trust and Brain One Health Foundation. We know that it is an entire village. And we are a village. We will move forward. We're not silly enough to expect everything to be a bed of roses, but we are conscious enough to accept the state we're in and deal with. So thank you so much for your interest, your help, and your willingness to move us forward. Sunny, again, like Farmer said, thank you for all your hard work also. To our staff, we appreciate you. We thank you. And most of all, to our residents. Thank you. Thank you for hanging out. Thank you for sticking and staying. And most of all, for your willingness to you, Ms. Williams and Mr. Brazel, to step up. And when you see a need, willing to meet that. We can all recognize problems, issues, and matters without question or doubt. The difference is being willing to change. So I thank you for stepping up. Everybody else, have a blessed evening. Be safe on the road. And by the grace of God, we'll see you at our next meeting.
Stop food.
Yes.
This is fun.
Yes.
Free. Mrs. Aaronor.